And Councilman Musat.
President.
And Council President Collins.
President. Item four, possible motion, motions to convene into closed executive session. Item may is the town council may convene into executive session to discuss, take possible action and or vote pursuant to the relevant requirements of R I G L forty two, forty six, five A, subsection two, pending litigation, national opioid litigation, discussion and or potential action, announcement and or votes from executive session and or open session concerning national opioid litigation. Item B is the town council may convene into executive session to discuss, take possible action, and or vote pursuant to the relevant requirements of Rhode Island general laws forty two, forty six, five A, subsection two, collective bargaining, which is union negotiations with Teamsters Local two fifty one, for new collective bargaining agreement beginning July first, twenty twenty five. Discussion and or potential action announcement and or vote votes from executive session and or open session concerning negotiations with Teamsters Local two fifty one for new collective bargaining agreement beginning July first, twenty twenty five. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against for executive session? Ed Spire and Karen.
Council comes out of the executive session. We do item six is motion to close the executive session, motion to seal the executive session. That was done in executive session. There was one vote taken. That was for item four A, which was the, in reference to the pending litigation for national opiate litigation. It passed. So now we'll move on to item five. Which is proclamations, presentations and what?
Vote.
It's an executive session.
What was the vote?
Motion was sealed. I just told you what the vote was about, Mr. Finnegan.
But it passed.
Yes.
You're not going to tell us what the vote was?
It was unanimous.
That's it?
That's it.
When are you going to come back and notify the public of what the vote was?
I'll speak to my solicitor about it.
Thank you.
Item five, proclamations, presentations and acknowledgements. Review, discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. Item A, recommendation from the police chief, Chief Rollinson, to promote Travis Marlowe to sergeant with salary and benefits consistent with the collective bargaining agreement with International Brotherhood of Police Officers, IBPO, Local 502. Chief?
Could face me? I, Travis Marlowe, do solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Rhode Island that I will well and fully faithfully execute my duties as a sergeant and partially enforcing all laws and ordinances of the state of Rhode Island and the town of Situate. Zealously guarding constitutional rights of all persons, all in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Situate Police Department.
The item B is a recommendation from the police chief for the following candidates to be hired from the police officer recruitment process. Lateral recruit candidates Jason Bulldog and Amber Perez for probationary police officers position. Terms and conditions of employment in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement with the International Brotherhood of Police Officers, IBPO, Local 502.
Jason and Amber, please come up. Jim Brady with a save for the glasses. Thank you, Jim. So Officer Jason Bulldog and Officer Amber Perez, their families can come up also. They both called me within less than a day of each other, wanting to come over and talk to me about a lateral transfer. We met with them. We were very impressed with their resumes. The accommodations, the certifications they have just proved that they want to be part of the Situate PD and it was, I was happy to see them come through the door. You guys can come forward a little bit more. We'll get your families up here. Jason Bulldog, he worked for the Lincoln PD for 20 years, retired as a patrol sergeant. He lateraled over to the Rhode Island Airport PD, and I know this in my airport, actually I shouldn't call it a PD, Rhode Island Airport Corporation, former employees and employees that are here in the audience to support these two. Jason worked at the airport corporation as a police officer for the last three and a half years. He holds a bachelor's degree from Roger Williams in criminal justice and a master's degree from Salve Regina in management. He's joined on stage by his wife Megan and the daughter Ava. And Officer Perez, Amber Perez, she proudly served the United States for five years in Rhode Island Army National Guard as a soldier in the 126th Aviation Battalion. In 2014, she joined the Traffic Transportation Security TSA and worked there for five years. 2019, she graduated the police academy and joined the Rhode Island Airport Corporation Police Department. In the last two years of her employment at the airport corporation, she was an explosives detection canine handler. She now joins her two classmates from the 29th Police Academy, Officer Palliat and Officer Aleah, who are lateraled over from different departments to the Situate PD. Amber is joined on stage by her wife Vianelli and their two children Lorenzo and Cecilia. So if you could raise your hands, please. I state your name.
I, Jason Bulldog.
I, Amber Perez.
Do solemnly swear. Do I uphold the constitutions?
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
State of Rhode.
And the state of Rhode Island. That I will well and faithfully
Execute my duties.
Execute my duties.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Enforce all laws and ordinances.
Enforcing all laws and ordinances.
Of the state of Rhode Island.
Of the state of Rhode Island.
The town of Situate.
And the town of Situate.
Zealously guarding.
Zealously guarding.
Constitutional rights.
Constitutional rights. All persons.
All in accordance.
All in accordance.
With the prison regulations.
With the with the rules and regulations of the Situate Police Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
You do Jaser first? Back for your wife?
All right, I want to go back to item four eight for a minute, reference to Mr. Finnegan's question. On conferring with the solicitor, he advised me to tell you that it was ratification of my dismissing Situate's participation in the class action suit for the litigation for opioids. Okay, that's what it was for.
I'll just clarify, we had a recommendation from National Council handling the litigation to agree to a dismissal of one of the defendants in the case. And so we took the recommendation of the National Council and filed the paperwork for that dismissal.
Thank you. All right. Item seven, public hearing. Could I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Show move.
Motion made to second it. Rule call, Peg.
Councilman Farmley?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Grandy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Musa? Council Vice President D'Agostino?
Aye.
And Council President Collins?
Aye. Item A, Town Council sitting as a beverageing license, board liquor license approvals expire in 12/1/2025. Subject to receipt of all required paperwork, all state and local permits, compliance with all stipulations, rules and regulations as previously required by the Town Council and necessary approvals from all department heads. Item one is amendment to the existing class BBL Field and Fork Incorporated for premises known as Groundwater Cafe at 985 Chopmest Hill Road. The amendment is to expand operating hours as approved by a special use permit issued by the zoning board of review. Mr. Charlin's here. Maybe we should hear from him first. He's the chairman of the zoning board.
Council members, I, the zoning board did meet and there were two issues that we were dealing with. One was the expansion of hours and the other was their liquor license. We did not have an issue with the expansion of hours, but any change to the operations was to come before the zoning board. And one of the conditions that we expressly put in there was interior use only for the band or the acoustical music that they were planning to do. We had hours of residents' testimony that emphasized that the impact that this would have on the community at large around them, the neighboring property owners. And it was felt that that would be contrary to what our zoning ordinance was allowing for, for the special use permit. So I urge you not to approve the outdoor entertainment aspect of this application. In terms of the regular operations, in terms of the liquor license and the hours, we had no problem with that.
So did they request outdoor liquor license seating for the restaurant only? No, that was not requested.
No outdoor mention at all at that point. In fact, it was expressly directed that we would not authorize that in terms of when they were going through the hearing.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Chairman Charlin, can you, this was, this was heard last year, is that correct?
We first heard it in February of '24 and they recently came before us again this year. And the expansion of the hours was changed this year.
Okay. Thank you, certainly.
I mean, I'll make them. I've been, I've read the, the results of the, the ruling of the zoning commission. And I'll make a motion to, you know, that we rule and keep, hold up the, basically the, the decision made by the zoning board.
Can I, can I, I didn't hear that, Tim.
I basically want to support the position taken by the zoning board.
Okay.
That, that, just so we're clear, that's the decision of February 18, 2025.
That's correct. Yep.
So that would be till 10 o'clock, closing hours and only inside entertainment and only one acoustical person, no bands.
And I think serving till 9:30, if I'm not mistaken.
Serving till 9:30.
Open till 10.
We had said could up to two people if they were acoustical, but again, all interior for that.
So basically we're making your motions this decision.
Yes.
So I'll give it a copy of it to Peg, so she has it. Okay, somebody second it? You did? Okay. Any discussion on it? I'm, let me get to it.
Yeah.
Because we open it for discussion after the motion. Anybody on the council have discussion? Okay, anybody in the public have discussion? You want to come to the mic? State your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Greg Easterbrooks. I'm an attorney with Kelly Souza Par Mentor in Resnick. We're located at 128 Dorance Street in Providence, Rhode Island. I represent in a butter to the applicant. I just want to echo what Mr. Charlin just indicated. I think his characterization of the zoning board hearing is consistent with what I perceived. I was at that last meeting in March or February of 2025 and the consensus was that any intensification of the use would be inside only. So I would just echo what Mr. Charlin just represented to you and that the application should be limited to inside entertainment only. No amplification. If you look at the special use permit, it clearly says solo acoustic artists only, no bands. So I would just implement that into whatever license that you grant tonight. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Sabrina McGuire, nine, sorry, 852 Chopmest Hill Road. I'm the owner of Groundwater Cafe. I just want to clarify my intent from the zoning board to my application. One was to extend the hours, which, you know, they, they don't seem to have a problem with. And I appreciate, as far as the music, yes, I am looking to have indoor music, possibly once a week, maybe once every other week, one solo artist. I have met with a couple of artists that have said, well, I sing and my husband plays the guitar and I hope that that would not pose a problem. I'm not looking for a band. There is no amplification. That is not what my intent is. So that is my only stipulation, I guess, as, aside from what is being discussed. Solo or duo at the most, a husband and wife combination type scenario. Again, no amplification, we were talking about a guitar and maybe a microphone. As well as on the outside part of the application, which is separate from the expansion of hours, it is a separate application. I, I was hoping that we could extend music outdoors to our prevailing area where people eat lunch and eat ice cream in that picnic area on a Saturday or a Sunday afternoon. Not evening hours, not where we're serving dinner, this is strictly just for the afternoon hours. I understand that there is going to be some issues. I, I hope that maybe we can see past them, but indoors is my full intent to enhance the environment during our dinner service. We aren't looking to have music all night long for, you know, five, six hours at a time. These are, these are solo artists or duos that are willing to pay, play, excuse me, anywhere from two to three hours. So that would fit within my dining service hours. If I'm serving from five to nine thirty, they would probably play from six to eight or six to eight thirty. So this is not meant to go all night long or any, any of that.
You have any questions?
Would we be considered to, or to amend that motion to, to have like acoustical groups of three or less, or less than three? Two?
That's what the decision is.
Yeah.
I actually don't have a lot of space for more than two, so that's really the extent I was looking for.
Okay, I'd like to get some feedback from Dennis if we could on that.
The discussion that was held at that meeting was that it would be limited to, as the applicant had said, a minimum of two people or maximum of two people, and most likely a single person who would be doing it. We didn't have a problem with the one to two people without the amplification, interior only. We did not want to go and have this become outside to impact on the neighbors. And that was what we were trying to use as a control. Any change, they were to come back to zoning. Or modification.
I think we're agreeable on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I have one question of the applicant, if I may, Ms. McGuire.
Yes.
The, the special event license application that you filed with the town. Just, just to be comprehensive here, it, it says name of event, inside music, acoustic, outdoor music acoustic. Would you be amenable to, to striking that outdoor music acoustic from, from this application based on what you've heard Chairman Charlin reference in your own comments?
Unfortunately, yes.
I, I know it's not what you want, I just think that we, I, I just want the application to be consistent and, and to match the representations here.
Understood, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, because it seems like the discussion moved into seven B, that seven B item. So I would say that we're also hearing that seven B item, although I think you could be two motions.
I, I apologize.
That's okay.
Yeah.
And then on Mr. McCormick's motion, just for clarification, his motion is that any approval on the seven A would, and I would say seven B also probably would incorporate by reference the zoning decision referenced by the chair.
Evening, Councilman McCollum on Trimtown Road. I just have a question. They have outdoor entertainment. But that's the chief, does that break their noise ordinance by having one or two people there?
You gotta put the mic up a little closer so I can hear.
Would that break the noise ordinance by two people playing outside? We have cautious, we have music, and that doesn't seem to be a problem.
Hello, I'm Jackie Brusso with AD Karoo Drive. I'm a direct of butter to this property. The first question I have for the board is, do you have a copy of the zoning decision? And if you do, and you read it, it literally says solo acoustic artist only. I don't know where duo is coming from, but solo is specifically in that resolution. And that was, was discussed as the zoning board member mentioned as well. I have something to read. I decided to read this time instead of trying to go off the cuff. This is regarding both the liquor license and the special entertainment license or whatever it is. So I actually sent this email and I received no response to anybody, so I'm gonna read it out loud. I am opposed to the special use permit as I was opposed to it last year when it was introduced, and I am still in opposition that this space does not belong in our neighborhood. Last year, Field and Fork stood up and said they were not like the others, they didn't want to work seven days a week. They didn't want to, their establishment to turn into a bar, and they really didn't want to disrupt the neighborhood. Now they're asking for seven days a week until seven, ten P M. Last year, they only asked for four days a week until nine P M, I think it was. So now we're going an hour later, we're adding three days a week. Do, where does it stop? How many times do I have to stand up here and oppose every single time they ask for more? Do I need to do this forever? The current limit to their hours and their days of the week keep nuisance out of the area. People aren't staying late, getting drunk, causing problems because they close at a reasonable time. As we keep extending this every year, and we keep allowing them to open more often, you allow music, you're now, you're turning my backyard into a bar. There's also an increase in traffic as these hours extend, with more under the influence driving coming from this establishment the longer it's open. I have personally witnessed several car accidents at that corner during the past year already, including one just a few weeks ago that involved a state trooper. It is a dangerous intersection that you're allowing to be even more dangerous the more alcohol you allow at this intersection. Before, two years ago, there was one restaurant at the corner, they're not open seven days a week. They have one neighbor. Now, as of two years ago, we have two restaurants at that corner. We have a vineyard that's less than a mile down the road, and now a liquor store less than a mile down the road. So now we have four establishments with liquor within a mile. What is going on with the avid approvals of all this liquor in one centralized area that prior to two years ago had one restaurant? That was a restaurant, there's no outdoor entertainment at this restaurant that's already there, okay? At this property, which is obviously not this applicant, but we already get at least two days a week from spring to winter, a car show one night a week, they do like a farmer's market another night of the week, they randomly have more events. So we're getting outdoor music constantly now. Whereas again, when I first moved in ten years ago, there was nothing, and now my quiet peaceful neighborhood is just expanding, expanding, expanding. So we have it two to three days a week for the landlord at that property that's playing music outside that apparently we can't stop. And now you're gonna give a special event license to these guys to also play music? It, it just seems like a lot, like why are we doing this? Um, all right, so I went off of my paper, but the last thing was the, the single acoustic music, which I already mentioned. So I guess my conclusion is, can you please take into account all the abutters and all the neighbors that are right behind this building? There's nine of us that abut it, and then another like eleven on the other side of the road that are all subject to this every day. Does any of you guys have a bar in your backyard? Because I never thought I would, living in Situate, when I moved here. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you. Anybody else?
Richard Finnegan, Ridge Road. Is that property in compliance with the zoning regulations?
We're here for the license, not for, you're going after Mr. Fredrickson? I don't know.
I'm not going after anyone.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to have the council inform me, because we're, we're a public hearing, whether that piece of property is in conformance with all rules and regulations, including zoning regulations. You're here to make a decision tonight, and I would think the council would be informed if that piece of property is in conformance with the rules and regulations, including zoning regulations. So do you have any answer for me?
Richard, I got a question, you're talking about the property writ large or this business? Because that's what we're here about tonight, is this business.
It's at the property at large, and it says subject to receipt of all required paperwork, all state and local permits, compliance with all stipulations, rules and regulations. What are the rules and regulations? Are they zoning? On that piece of property?
Mr. Finnegan, I think it says with all stipulations, rules and regulations as previously acquired, previously required by the Town Council.
Okay, what were they? Let's hear them, because we're here for a hearing, so let's hear what those are tonight. I have the time. I don't hear anything.
We're, we're talking about the rules and regulations that were on this business, not the property.
And associated with the license.
And what are they? What are the rules and regulations you are making the decision on tonight? If you're not making the decision on zoning regulations, if that property's not conformance with our zoning regulations.
We're not the zoning board, Richard.
Yeah.
I didn't say you were the zoning board, you're the Town Council, and you're making a decision that this piece of property is in compliance with all rules and regulations. What are the rules and regulations that you, the Town Council, are looking at to make your decision? I haven't heard one yet. Please stop listening.
I, I think, I think Chairman Charlin specified earlier what the rules and regulations were regarding this subject.
Let's hear them.
Well, he, he expressed them twice already.
Let's hear them, I'm asking you, I didn't hear it, I'm hard of hearing.
You, you were in the audience, weren't you?
I'm hard of hearing.
That's not all you have.
I have a disability, so I'm hard of hearing, and please listen for me.
Were you sitting here earlier? Were you sitting here when Mr. Charlin spoke?
Did you just hear me?
Were you sitting here when Mr. Charlin spoke?
Did you just hear me? Obviously, you can't hear.
I have it right here, the zoning board finds that based on facts, testimony and evidence presented, and its knowledge of the property, and with conditions of approval to be strictly constructed, that the special use permit is granted by a vote of three to two. So the zoning board did check into it, and they found everything fine. I got it right here in front of me, Richard, that, that was a year ago, and that was just this recent decision too. I'll get you a copy of both of them if you want them, if it helps you.
I came up to the mic, I came up to the mic because I just wanted to say that, again, this is regarding the liquor license, they're asking for expansion of hours. That's what's before the, the board tonight. Not, not whether they're in compliance with zoning or the whole property is in compliance zoning. I did just take a moment to ask the police chief if there's any pending violations regarding their liquor license, and he indicated to me there are none.
Thank you. Here's the issue. Here's the issue. You have a lot of music there, a lot of events going on at that property. And it shouldn't be going on. You know it as well as the residents, they know it, they really know it. I don't think anyone would have a problem with a renter having solo entertainment. I don't think that's a problem, I don't think any of these residents would have the problem. But you know what the problem is, they know what the problem is, you need to fix it. Instead of coming here every, every year and listen to the same thing with these residents complaining. Please act on their behalf.
Steve Cornet, Old Plainfield Pike. If you haven't been there, Groundwater Cafe is a unique, innovative and classy business. Those people work very hard, they support local nonprofits, and I think they should be encouraged to develop their business in accordance with all existing regulations and noise ordinances. We have a positive businesses in town, and we shouldn't scare this one away.
Thank you.
I will completely agree with that gentleman over there, it's commercial property. You have commercial businesses in town that need to thrive, and by putting a stop to everything that they do, is not promoting them to further themselves. And it's fires, late night drinking, everything else over there. You could ask the chief, have they ever had any problems with anybody leaving that establishment from wherever they were, drinking? And I understand that lady brought that thing about the state police, I'm pretty sure he was not drinking when he got in an accident.
Walla Bromley, eighteen Karoo Drive, I'm also a butter. All the abutters really want is a little kindness from this Town Council, a little empathy from this Town Council. Come to my backyard. When the charity events are held, I cannot sit on my back deck. It's obnoxious. I understand they're under a charity, but this is not a charity, this is a business. I don't have a problem if they play music inside their business. I have a problem with it being later and later and later, more and more hours for the liquor license, and I also have a problem with any outdoor entertainment. It's infringing on everybody's backyard. I'm sure you wouldn't want that in your backyard, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Frank Bromley, Karoo Drive. It's the Blue House. That's what people are told when they want to know where, why there's problems with getting liquor served, it's the guy in the Blue House. We've been here years, tired coming back here. It's, we've been trying to stop liquor being served there for years, that's the main goal here. One way or another, we're gonna get liquor on that corner. It's in the same building, it's not a separate building, it's not a separate business. It's the nine eighty-five Chomist Hill, and they're gonna be serving liquor out of there. There's been four businesses in that, is in that corner of that building since it opened, and they started renting out that space. I believe it's four. None of them lasted more than a year. This is the fifth business going in there now. Apparently, they were able to go in there and start a tapas menu without any liquor license. Why would you put all that investment into a, a business that needs wine to be served when you don't have a liquor license? They did that knowing full well they were gonna have no problem getting a liquor license once they established that business, and here we are. They came in one time, they wanted a few hours a week, just like my neighbor said. Now it's seven days a week, now it's ten o'clock at night. Where does it end? Everything just keeps chipping away, we're back here every year. And I want to say something about the zoning board meeting that I attended a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, to discuss this. We're not all in agreement that we, there were no issues with liquor being served up there. And I want to say one thing. We come in here with good intentions and try to comport ourselves and present a reasonable case for our argument. I don't have that expectation anymore. It's fallen on deaf ears. It was proven to me quite succinctly at the zoning meeting by one of the voting members, who said, I quote, "Well, I'm the businessman, so I'm good with all of it." So basically, you're saying our arguments don't matter. The town council was loaded with businessmen, and all the voters, the voting that approved of this were businessmen. So you're basically telling us, we're going to listen to you, but we're just putting on a show here because it's not going to carry any weight. We don't care. Excuse me, Mike. I also want to address the, the town council and the zoning board. I don't think anybody has any idea how the sound travels from the top Chottmas Hill to the bottom on Crew Drive, through those woods. I don't think anybody has any idea. We judge the arrival of spring now by when the car shows start. And the V8 start rolling in with the open headers and the microphones start with the announcing of the next arrival and what's under the hood. And the band starts, and the band's trying to play over the traffic on Route 101 that's going by 50 miles an hour. There's no release. We go, we literally go indoors and shut our doors and windows in the summer. And you want to add to that now. First of all, I appreciate Mr. Finnegan's bringing up the, the point about zoning. There has been zero mitigation.
Paul, you want to stick to the groundwater cafe, the license here, not the other stuff?
Okay.
You know?
Mr. Collins, there's been zero mitigation at that site. For any entertainment, for any activity, for any business, not just the one, or these people, there's been zero. There's no fences. What happens when this place is open till 10 o'clock at night? And the overflow is parking in the field, and people are putting their headlights on and revving their motors and pulling out at 10 o'clock at night?
Have you complained to the police department?
To something that they haven't got a license for yet? How do we complain to the?
I'm talking about, you're talking about the car shows and like that. Complaint to the police department. Don't get up here about groundwater, complaining about that stuff. That's all.
Mitigation for noise, Charles. Which includes music, which includes car traffic, not just auto shows, but any kind of traffic, okay? It's a quiet corner. It's, we have nine abutters. We have rights. We've put signatures together. We've organized. We presented this town council with facts about percentages of property owners opposing the liquor license. But we're here, we're giving out a liquor license. I don't know where all of that went. It was apparently ignored or just discarded or decided it wasn't necessary at all. Well, that's all I got. I'm just here to say that I oppose it. And I want to point out what the zoning board said that eliminated any possible chance of this open discussion or an honest, an honest judgment in this case. We have never received any judgment or any consideration whatsoever, and I think you know it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think we have to have Dennis come up again and clarify something regarding the number of participants on the indoor only, because that's all we're talking about right now. Was it one or a duo?
My memory is, was that it was up to two people playing one acoustical guitar. It could be the singing, as was alluded to, but it was.
One instrument?
One instrument, yes.
Is that other people read on that? Because it sounded like it was a solo situation was referred to in their opinion. I don't have it right in front of me.
It actually says solo acoustic artists. So it says artist, which is plural, but it says solo. But then, item B is also going to ask us, which we have to change if we're going to do that. It says solo or duelo, and it also says indoor and outdoor. If you read the agenda.
Okay, so that, so we don't have to amend your decision because it does allow for that. But it's obviously indoors. Thank you.
Regarding the liquor license, I just wanted to clarify the board. Again, I did speak to Chief Rowlandson. So their liquor license is for indoor service and consumption only. So if there is outdoor service or outdoor consumption, the neighbors can't make a complaint to the police department, and that will be investigated.
And I, I believe their liquor license is for beer and wine only. No hard liquor.
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
So, you know, also, I mean, on this, they're not allowed to serve alcohol during these said car shows, bike runs for veterans, kids' days. I mean, it looks like it's, um, you know, during those large events, there will not be alcohol sold.
Hey, Richard.
I, I just want to point out that on the application, special event license application, it talks about the property owner information. And it says Fredrickson Farm LLC. So let's not try to limit comment on the property owner. It's right on your application. Thank you.
Do you have any questions about me, about anything that you've heard? I do have a couple of answers if you wanted to hear anything, but specifically to your point about the car shows is that we do not serve during car shows. However, our license was restricted to Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So even when there is no car show happening, we still were unable to serve on a Wednesday, which is when the car shows happen typically. That means before the car shows happen. That means if it rains and there is no car show that happens, that means if it's the middle of winter and there are no car shows scheduled, we were not able to serve on that day. So it did hinder our business considerably to be limited those, to those days. We did consider that when we were asking for the license to be only the, the four days. We also don't plan on extending our hours to what they already are. We just don't want to be limited if something comes up where we hold an event on a Monday or a Tuesday night, like a an organization wants to come in and have a meeting, and they want us to serve beer and wine, and it's on a Monday night because we're closed. That's typically a night that we're closed. It would be a perfect night for them to hold their meeting. And we aren't able to do that. So we're losing business because of that restriction. So we're not looking to serve alcohol outside. We're not looking to serve it during the car shows or create some nuisance. We are looking to grow our business in ways that we have the capacity to do that. And serving seven days for whatever our business calls for, whether it be an event, or whether it be, you know, a rainy Wednesday afternoon, and, and a family comes in, and the parents want to have a drink with their, their dinner. We've been limited to that. We have lost customers. We've had people that have never walked in our building before. They think it's beautiful. They love the concept. They can't wait to eat the food, and then they go, wait a minute, I can't have a beer with my dinner. Okay. And I've had people leave. I've had people stay, but maybe they'll never come back. And that's not a way to build a business. Having to say no to your customers consistently. So I am asking that you take that into consideration in your decision. That we are not looking, again, to create a nuisance to our neighbors. We've been good neighbors as far as I can see. We do have empathy. We invited them, the neighbors, to come to our business and see what we're all about. And I appreciate that the people that are here have come in and seen what we're all about, and know that we're not trying to create any kind of any kind of nightclub atmosphere, or anything but a family place for gatherings, and good food and enjoyment. So again, thank you for those that have come to check us out. Like I said, I do have answers if you have any questions for me about some of the things that you've heard.
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'll be quick. I just wanted to clarify the reason you're getting a lot of resistance regarding the property owner is that it's a culmination. I know you guys keep zoning in on this application for this one thing. Well, okay, an extra day or an extra hour, not a big deal. But it's a culmination. It's not just that one thing happening. It's everything that I said when I came up the first time. It's, you have to consider that. You can't just say, okay, well, they're fine. And then, you know, the other guy on the corner of the pizza shop, let's just give them a liquor license too, and not pay attention to the fact that there's already one right there. That's the point I think we're trying to make as a group. I hope that it's a culmination of many outdoor events. Why add more? Of lots of liquor in this corner, why add more? Why add more days? Why add more time? Why add more chances for accidents to happen? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, bottom of the discussion. Put it to a vote. Roll call peg.
Here on, on what we're voting on, 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 we're on Tim's motion, just so we're very clear on it. Do we have that?
I have that. Tim made the motion. Terry seconded it.
To approve.
To approve the 218, 2025 zoning board decision to allow the liquor license to go to 10:00 PM only inside.
And to have acoustic.
No, that's item B.
Oh, that's next. Okay. All right, perfect.
This is just.
For now. Thank you.
You want me to do a roll call?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilman Parmley?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Grandy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yor?
Aye.
Councilman Musat?
Aye.
Council Vice President Daggostino?
Aye.
And Council President Collins?
Aye.
Item B, issuance of a yearly event license seeking indoor and outdoor solo or duo acoustic music at Field and Fork, Inc., for premises known as Groundwater Cafe at 985 Chottmas Hill Road. Have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a yearly event license seeking indoor only solo or duo acoustic music at Field and Fork, Inc., for the premises known as Groundwater Cafe at 985 Chottmas Hill Road.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Council? Anybody have any questions over?
Councilman Parmley?
I gotta have see it put to public. Anybody have any discussion? They want to say anything about this?
Seems like we can't really say anything to sway you guys, but please take into consideration that there is already a lot of music at that corner. Indoor, outdoor, it doesn't matter. There's a ton. We're just going to keep adding to it. And we'll be here next year.
Okay, bottom of the discussion. Roll call peg.
Councilman Parmley?
Aye.
Councilman McCormick?
Aye.
Councilman Grandy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yor?
Aye.
Councilman Musat?
Aye.
Council Vice President Daggostino?
Aye.
And Council President Collins?
Aye. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, passes. Item A, public comment for items, not any agenda. I'm going to start holding to the two-minute rule. That means you come up two minutes, say what you got to say, and don't come back multiple times. Huh? Oh, no, that was public hearing. You could have stayed up there. I couldn't stop it. No, no, it hasn't, because I haven't recognized them yet. Because I got some people who like to come back four or five times, but that's not what it's about.
Wrong guy.
Okay.
My question is, down at Town Hall after all the construction got completed, is the landscaping in the front of that building going to go back to the way it was when they started construction? And is the Town Hall going to get their signs as they were promised?
Okay.
Thomas Gallagher in Pine Hill Road. I'd like to speak about Pine Hill State. I assume everyone's familiar with it. It's a 42-unit, low to moderate income housing. And my question on it is, they're bringing water from Providence into Situate. Can anyone do that from another district that feels like it? Not one, not one thing.
Just so you know, I've been told that Providence has already approved it.
This has been going on a while. Providence knows about it. I called everybody in the state. Sakachi three times, never called me back. The governor's office, you name it, I called them. All right? I called Providence Water Board. Had a, I had somebody call me back. I discussed it with them. Because that's in a watershed. And I said to them, how come Councilman McCormick had 50 acres that were put down as unbuildable? Am I right, Timmy?
Tom, my land is not, you know, subject to tonight, but what's your, first off, it's. Yeah, I'm sure it is. And it's 60 acres.
Pardon me?
It's 60 acres, to be clear.
So I asked.
Which, which I think you advocated that we have LMI housing on our property, which I think is humorous.
I never did that.
Go ahead.
When, when did I, you know? All right.
All right, let's stick to the point, please. Let's stick to the point. What's your, what's your point?
What, Tom, what was your question again?
My point. You're taking up my two minutes.
Tom, what's your?
The police chief stopped me for my First Amendment right. Is that what you're doing? I want to know when the two-minute rule passed this council. And don't you tell me it did because it has.
Tom, what's your, what was your question about?
My question was, to the city of Providence, how come that was in the watershed? And it was purchased. And across the street from me, there's six acres of land that's in the watershed. Nothing against you, you know?
Yeah.
If you feel guilty, that's not my fault. Okay? But I asked why, across the street from me, being in the watershed was not also taken? And the thing I spoke to.
I think the answer to that, sir, is because that land that you're talking about off the Pine Hill Road?
Yes.
Was not, the development rights of that land was not sold to the Providence Water Supply Board. Mr. McCormick sold his property or the rights, he gave away the rights of his, the development rights of his property to the Water, Providence Water Supply Board. That's why you can't build on there. So that's the answer, because the people who owned the property on Pine Hill Road didn't sell it to Providence Water.
Oh, but Providence Water came in after you purchased it and bought the development rights.
Right.
Correct?
Yep.
I asked Providence Water why they didn't do that. And I told the guy, the fix is in. Somebody's got to fix up there because Providence Water had already brought pipes in there a long time before that. Now here's my question to you. They're going to put low to moderate income housing. I assume there'll be children. With Providence Water coming into Situate, it's going to pass a lot of old pipes. A lot of pipes that are underground. Probably a lot of pipes that are lead. So when that water comes into Situate, are we going to ask the contractor to put a purifying system there before it comes into Situate? Are we gonna, they're gonna put two retention ponds up? What happens if God forsaken child drowns in one of them? That land is in Situate. So is Situate gonna be responsible? Every one of yous will get sued. You know that. I know you're insured. But if it's not enough, they'll sue you personally. Now, what happens if they don't have an area or a group that takes care of the property? Who's gonna pick up the garbage? Situate? What about when it snows if they don't plow? Are you gonna allow children out on Trim Town Road waiting for a school bus? On Pine Hill, rather? You're on Trim Town.
Sir, did you, uh, did you, did you come to the special town council meeting where the planner talked about the low to moderate income housing and all, you left?
Yeah.
I, I remember seeing you leave rather early into the meeting. They went over all of these things in the meeting. Matter of fact, the meeting went to about ten o'clock at night.
I've been in and out of the hospital. In fact, I got in and out of the hospital yesterday about three thirty, all right? And I'm hurting right now. But I'm here because this involves me and my property. And the driveway is gonna be directly across the street from mine. Has the police looked into the road conditions up there? I'd also like to ask the chief, as part of the liaison to the water board, when did you know about this development?
Tom, you can't start asking the chief. We're not having a hearing here. This is not.
Ask the chief, please.
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get into it. We're not gonna get into a discussion after this. Not on the agenda. You know that.
He's a liaison.
I don't care what he is.
Doesn't have, does it?
No, it does.
It doesn't.
Okay.
You know?
How do you feel that way? Anybody else have a public comment that they want to get?
Uh, Steve Corrigan, Old Plainfield Pike. I have, uh, two quick, uh, hopefully non-controversial issues. Um, one, uh, Citro Preservation Society has established a Historic Cemeteries Committee. We did that last fall. Um, so this month, later this month, we're gonna do the first, uh, major cleanup with that committee at Pontigan City Cemetery. We'll be repairing, um, stones and cleaning stones out there. And I'd like to publicly thank, um, Kirk and Public Works for supporting our efforts as we go through this. Second, um, you have establishment of an ad hoc committee for the nation's semi-quinsentennial later during this meeting, if we ever get to it. And, uh, I would just like to remind the council that next year is also the one hundredth anniversary of the Situate Reservoir. That may merit a commemorative event for the town, especially to remember all those Situate families whose lives were disrupted for the reservoir to be built. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the board. Um, what would be the process of getting something on the agenda if we had an issue with something that was going on within the town?
You have to, uh, send a letter to me requesting it be done.
Would it be a physical letter or an email?
Well, either way.
Okay. How do, what if there's no response?
You'll get a response.
Uh, and also send it to me.
Well, that's.
Everything is supposed to go to the clerk and.
Send it to her. She'll send it out.
Yeah, to both of us.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Penny Choslin Melphy, ninety Rockland Road. Um, I have questions, uh, from last month's meeting uh, about the trail that you approved funding for. Um, I went to the, the school committee and asked them some questions about it. They have no knowledge about it. They said, we know nothing about it. It has nothing to do with us. The kids ride buses down to the field, so there's not a, uh, a safety issue with that. And it's a nominal fee, apparently, a daily fee for that. So I, I'm just questioning why there was such a quick unanimous vote to approve eighty-one thousand dollars to put in a trail, just, just to assure the, the acquisition of, uh, the conservative of, of the area and that, right?
First of all, it was the, to get an easement for the trail.
Six thousand for the easement.
It wasn't the trail. It was an easement for the trail.
I understand.
And also to buy the, uh, development rights.
Development rights.
Of the property down there. So we don't end up having more LMI properties over there.
Okay, but when, when I watch.
You, you let me finish? Okay, I've talked to Rob Bauer, who's in charge of, uh, the Conservation Commission and had to put that forward. Uh, it's been fully funded by the, the federal government and the state, a hundred percent. So that's why that was done. Now, he's working on the rest of it, and once it comes down to it's gonna go farther forward, he said he would have to get the council, the land trust, the conservation committee, and the school committee. We'd all have to get together and discuss what we're gonna do down there. Because when we had the discussion, Mr. Kusma's got up and said about the, uh, the hunting stands they had down there that we didn't know anything about. So there's a lot of unknowns right now. You're right. Like that, right? So, and, and I read your article in the journal, I mean, the Valley Breeze, like that. So we have to go look at it further. But we wanna get that land so it's not buildable. That's why we wanted the development rights and everything.
I, I understand the development rights for the conservation area of it, but for the trail seems unnecessary.
Well, we wanted the easement. They want the easement for the future. So there'll be, there'll be something in the future. Or it's done.
What, how was it decided on how much to pay for that? Like, who, who did the assessment of what it was valued at? And how much to come up for?
I think the Conservation Commission, whether they had it appraised, the, you know. Richard, why don't you get up and ask yourself instead of having her ask the question? All right.
I, I have a question. Why are you opposed to it?
Uh, because I am one of those neighbors that's going to a butt. And we already put up the, the brunt of all of the crap from the high school and all of the traffic and everything that we, they get from that on a daily basis. I really don't want it in my backyard as well as my front yard.
Well, I gotta tell you, one of the things, my children went to Situate High School and they did, they participated at the, the field and, um, maybe this busing thing is new, but, um, they either drove down to the field or they walked down Rockland Road.
Correct. I, I.
And I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just pleased that they didn't get killed on Rockland Road. So, um, I was always an advocate of having the trail completed, because there is a trail back there, to bring it to Manning Field. And that's what this is doing, as far as I understand it.
Okay, well.
Plus the buses, if you wanna bus the kids down there, costs money. You gotta pay a bus driver to do all that, get gas, you know?
They said with a nominal daily.
All right, sorry, but I gotta hold you to two-minute rule. So, thank you.
Good evening, you're Melphy, ninety Rockland Road. Um, I know you want the easement, as you made clear. Um, obviously, the basic foundational problem is the traffic and the danger on Rockland Road. You think you all agree to that? The drinking is unbelievable, and I can prove it. I've had many discussions with the chief. I don't understand if that's the basic root of the problem, why there isn't more attention given to that road and law enforcement. I know they're not staffed to do it twenty-four seven, but I've never seen a policeman, and I've also had this conversation with both Chris and the chief multiple times. I don't understand why there isn't, uh, law enforcement when people are going to school and when they're coming, you know, home. Because that is, you can't go to your mailbox. If you go to your mailbox, you take the life in your hands. It's ridiculous. And I've talked to the postmaster to move the mailbox because nothing else seems to be happening to ease that problem. So I'm just wondering what the council can do about more law enforcement, more speeding. The drinking, when we walk on that road, I can prove it. I've talked to many policemen and I've asked them to come to the house on Memorial Day weekend. After the three-day weekend, I can give them what I found picking up just on Rockland Road alone, like recycling bins filled with, uh, all kinds of alcohol discards. And we know for a fact, it's not only the students, it's the parents. I can, I, I have cameras. And to what my wife brought up, when the, it got really bad, we had individuals driving down my driveway at two, three in the morning just to check it out. Not to turn around, because they go all the way down to the house and just sit there. You know, wake me up at night and say, what's going on? Talk to the chief. I made the complaint. Uh, we had to put cameras at my expense, you know, installed and the, the stop, put a gate up, close the gate at night. So we have your button now in the back. You want me to be just as vigilant on my own behalf, spend the money on the backyard now, so I'm, I'm attacked from the front and the back? I don't understand why this is even a discussion. I'll have to say.
All right. All right, Richard.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank you. I had an issue. I couldn't find the document on the, the agenda. And I reached out to you and, um, you clarified it, and I really appreciate it. I, I would, I would hope that maybe Madam Clerk, that when you get the agenda and the doc, document items, they can all go on the Secretary of State's website. I know, I know there's a little change in the office right now, but they, they have been on the Secretary of State website, but this one particular time they, they weren't. So, uh, I would ask that. Make sure every document is on the Secretary of State's website. Um, I want to thank Councilman McCormick for having the City of Providence Water Supply Board purchase the development rights for his property. I, I, I think that was wonderful. And I, I think it's gonna save the taxpayers a lot of dollars in the years to come. So I, I, I would urge more homeowners to sell the development rights to City of Providence Water Supply Board. And you can reach out to Richard Blajette, and, um, next month I'll bring his number with me and, um, write it down and sell your development rights to him. I think he would love to, because there's plenty of money. Not only is there state and local money, but there's federal money that comes in from fines and fees for environmental damage to the environment. The gentleman just came up here talking about law enforcement, routine patrol. Um, I, I, I see law enforcement on our town roads constantly. I, I walk Trim Town Road almost daily. I walk Rockland Road. They're back and forth. I don't know how many times when, when I'm walking in the morning, the afternoon, that law enforcement, they're out there. So I, I, I would like the residents to know. They are out there. They are doing their job. If you don't see them, maybe you're not in town during those hours when they go buy your house, but.
Too much, Richard.
They are really, really good. The, um, Human Resource Manual. We spent forty-three thousand dollars on the Human Resource Manual, um, a couple of months ago. That was the total. We had forty-five thousand that we were gonna spend on it. Um, when are we gonna get that?
They're having a meeting at the end of the month, and I talked to Abby, but you wanna talk about?
There are, there's, uh, if you look in the consent agreements, there's a complete synopsis of what's we've done so far. And we have a meeting coming up on twenty-two April to, um, go over department heads, information, uh, the book. We are moving along. That, I understand, Richard, the last time this book was done was nineteen ninety-nine. Few things have changed. So there's a lot of, lot to consider for a group of five people.
No, no, I agree, but I, I believe it's been over two years.
Well, we had some, we had some, um, we had a slow start. We were moving along much better now.
May, maybe need more meetings. I don't know. But, um, I, I, I think the employees deserve to know what.
We're working on it, Richard. We meet once a month.
They need to look at, well, I, what, what I asked you.
It's, it's a volunteer organization, Richard. We meet once a month. We're getting as much done as we can. There's a lot to cover.
I appreciate it. We're here in April. I'm asking you to consider, um, Christmas vacation. So loo- look at that for our town employees who work in the town hall.
All right, Richard, two minutes is up. Thank you.
Can I, can I go on to another subject?
Nope. Two minutes. Done.
Two minutes.
Anybody else have something?
Two minutes total?
Two minutes total.
On any subject?
You're not gonna put twenty-two minute things up anymore. Forty minutes.
Well, that, so we changed the policy tonight?
No, that's what the policy was, and I tried to extend you, uh, a courtesy, and you talk twenty minutes up there. And anybody else that wants to talk can't talk. So I'm holding it two minutes. No, that's it, Richard. Anybody else?
I got one other thing. I, I think, um, Mr. Gallagher got up here. Obviously, he's having some medical issues. And I, I would think we could take public comment out of order if he shows up and he has something to say, so he can go back home. And, um.
Okay.
You know, I, I would hope the council would take that into consideration.
I will from now on. Thank you. Moving on to item seven. Consent items. We're all done, public comment.
I'd like to speak to Mr. Grandy if I could. You stopped me before, before I could get to him. All right? You know, the way you're running this, nah, you're not the king here.
No, I never said I was.
Give people a chance.
You know what, Tom? I'm gonna read something to you. In Situate, Rhode Island, there's no specific ordinance maintaining, mandating a two-minute limit time for public comment. However, the Situate Town Council reserves the right to limit the total devoted, total time devoted to any issue and may by vote agree to continue a discussion. According to the Town of Situate Code of Ordinances, Abby Groves, after being reelected as Town Council President, implemented a two-minute time limit per person for public comment. This was a decision by the presiding officer, not a formal ordinance.
Who was that?
Abby. That was when Abby was president.
Was there a vote on it?
Yes, we all voted for it.
I don't recall.
Yeah, we did, because you know what? I, because I want to tell you what, Tom. Tom, I led the way on this because I was getting constant complaints from people. Can I finish? Can I finish? Can I finish talking? I was getting complaints at the, at the soccer field where I am, at Boy Scouts, at that, wherever I'm in town, at this art festival, that people get up and take up so much time that the meetings run till ten, eleven o'clock, and what they wanna talk about, they don't have time to. So we applied two-minute rule for a person, so we could get on to other business and other people's rights to have something to say at these meetings.
All right, I had one subject. I got another subject which involves you. I'd like to speak about.
I see you weren't listening, but go ahead.
I was listening, but I think it's wrong. You shouldn't stop citizens who vote, who pay taxes from coming up here and saying what they want.
I have the right to tell you that other people have the right to say something. I have the, I, Tom, I have the right to tell you that other people. You're not listening to a thing I'm saying.
Public comment is over. We're moving on.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to consent items. Could I have a motion for the consent items?
I'd like.
Motion made and seconded.
I'd like to, um, could we take out, um, Jay? I, I just have a question about that. I.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pass the consent items, everything but Jay.
Um, the, I think, Peg, that the, uh, Bergantino was listed in the, in the minutes as having been part of that motion, and that was, they were not part of that motion. This is the one where we approved the kennel licenses on, um.
Oh, okay.
On March thirteenth, and we pulled Bergantino out. So just to make note of that.
Thank you.
Okay, well said. Motion made and seconded. Uh, no other discussion or anything? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Passes. Item J is ratification of the agreement for the Land Use Conflict Council Services was, uh, desertal, browning and law.
I didn't, I just have a question. I didn't realize that we were, we had hired somebody, and I, I just didn't know how we landed on this firm. Um, any information about it would be.
Okay, what, what happened was I talked to Dave Petracca. And they usually, when there's a conflict with, I believe it's planning, right, Wyatt? Yeah, when there's, they, they get somebody.
I guess.
Like that. And then that's, that's how we did it.
Right, I know, but we've never.
Right, I know, but we've never, have we used these people before? Wha, what was the recommendation? Does it usually go out to bid or?
No, it's who our solicitor recommended.
My understanding from Solicitor Petracca was a recommendation, uh, to engage that conflict council. So, and we're familiar with their, their work and they're knowledgeable in the subject areas.
All right, okay. Okay, I have a motion to accept that.
I make a motion to, um, to, um, approve the consent item J, ratification of the agreement for land use conflict council, uh, services with desulte, Browning Law.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All favor? Aye. Aye, against? Passes. Item ten appointments, there is none.
Mr. President, real quick, I just want to say a shout out to Karen Beatty, who put together this month, in this monthly report, a, a nine month purchases, uh, a, a P and L profit and loss statement, um, which I think, I think Terry was asking for this. And, uh, it gives us a good synopsis and it's all on one sheet and it was just, it's a nice consent, nice, uh, concise summary of where we stand. I just want to thank her for it.
Is that something that's going to be included every month?
Just standing, I think it's going to be done quarterly.
Quarterly, quarterly is good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yep.
On the same subject, on that report, the Treasurer's Office, the education line seven, five, six, we're running into deficit. Why the deficit?
Dead, Karen?
We have an individual that has participating certifications, budget, municipal affairs type of programs that are being run at URI. Rather than inhibit her progress, we'll find the money within our department budget to, to handle that deficit in that particular line item. And in the subsequent budget that we're working on now, I'm looking to increase that, because we now have two new employees that will be participating in these training programs that are being put on by the Office of Municipal Affairs and the, um, I believe it's URI.
So is that a six thousand dollar tuition payment for that line item? Several thousand, so what are, what are the other payments in that line item? So we're in a negative one thousand, one hundred and eighty three dollars. I mean, that, for this small town, that's substantial in this one line item. So I'm, I'm asking the council to look into that one li, uh, line item to get the bills and to see what has been paid out of that line item. It's imperative that the council does their job. So here we have a negative balance in a line item. And I think the council should look into this line item. I think there's an issue here. And I would hope the council would look into this.
The issue is, we have an extremely motivated employee that wants to take advantage of the training that's available to her. And I strongly encourage the council to support our, our decision to fund that. And as I indicated to you, be delighted to show you what she's been taking and, uh, provide the detail for that account as, as been requested.
So I, I would hope the council looks into it and reports back to the residents of the town next month on this one particular line item, what was spent from this line item and why we have a deficit. It shouldn't be a lot of work. It's a simple five thousand dollar line item and we're in the hole, one thousand, one hundred and eighty one dollars. So it shouldn't be a lot of work, but let's look into this and see what you can find.
Okay, item ten, appointments, there is none. Resolutions, item eleven, there's none. Item twelve, town business, review, discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. A, the creation and authorization to post for positions for a new ad hoc committee, Situate two fifty. The committee will plan events for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our nation.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Barring no discussion, all favor? Aye. Any against?
I will post it to see if there's anybody.
I thought you were going to be the chair of it.
Uh, I think Reggie is. I might be the vice chair.
Okay, item B, request from the building zoning official, DiOrio, for the town council to petition the state building commissioner to allow a twenty five percent increase to the town's permit fee schedule.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. We have discussion on that? Barring no discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Passes. Item C, request from Rhode Island housing and Susan Prime to waive a credit requirements for a septic replacement loan. The applicant's debt to in, uh, income ratio is over the town guideline approval of forty five percent. We've already had this twice in front of us and we've denied it, so the consensus of the council? No action? No action, Peg? Item D, authorization for the town council president Collins to sign the memorandum, addendum for the hazard mitigation plan, additional services or final grant report and close out with REMA totaling nine hundred and thirty six dollars. The HMP grant will cover the cost of the MOA.
Provo.
Motion made and seconded. We have any discussion on that?
I know it was in process at one point in time, but I don't know if the approval has taken place or not. That's just a future comment, I guess. I mean, nine hundred and thirty six dollars, that's over approval.
It's going to be covered by the MOA, so. Yep, yeah, I haven't heard. Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Any against? Unanimous, Peg? And item E, recommendation from the historical signage committee to award the bid for graphic panels and hardware to Fossil Industries, bid submitted from uh, Fossil Ad, AA Sign and Honing and the Blink Marketing.
I think so.
Um, as you'll notice, the low bid is what we're looking for, the fifteen thousand. I don't have my glasses on.
Fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty seven dollars.
Thank you very much. We were, we were hoping to put a, yeah, I got them in my pocket. I just didn't put them on. Um, we were hoping for a ten percent, uh, uh, for miscellaneous things. It did not get added, so we don't want to hold this up. We hope that you'll approve that fifteen thousand, but we might be coming back for fasteners or something like that, because we're going to need to put some stainless steel fasteners. The highway department's going to put them in. There's a possibility that there could be another fifteen hundred dollars in there. The money was all appropriated, much more than that, but we just want you to know that there could be a time that we come back to you. So, just to let you know.
Okay.
We don't want to change this, because on the agenda for that amount, we'd like to go with it. Any other questions?
I'll, I'll second that. I don't have any questions. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any discussion on it? Is, motion's been made and seconded. No discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Any against? The passes?
Thank you.
And motion to adjourn? Where's the? Oh, okay, sorry. All right. Item F, recommendation from the public works director, Lozelle, to award the bid for onsite wastewater treatment system treatment repair for Chalmers Hill Volunteer Fire Department to Land Works LLC doing business as pro septic bids received from, we have the five bids.
I'm going to recuse myself, Mr. President.
Okay.
Eric, was the, uh, the, the low bid, you just didn't think they'd be qualified? Is that why they got thrown out? Yeah, yeah.
That they, in the bid requirements, it was required, said it, highlighted, underlined, required. There was no set time. I met with, any, anytime you want to meet, I'll meet. Uh, one of them was five thirty. When he got done with his job, I met him there. The other one was after four, no problem. I didn't set a day, a time. Whatever's good for you is good for me. Those are the only two that showed up, so that's why we kicked the other two out. They didn't meet the requirements and, uh, went with them. We've used Land Works. They just got the, uh, they won the bid for the Hope Library. Went down, saw them, uh, they do a good job. Hillview, equal work, both very good. Uh, we just went with them. They were the lower.
Thank you.
Yep. Good motion, motion's made and seconded.
Make a motion to approve the land, Land Works.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Barring no discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Against? Still set? Item G, recommendation from public works director Lozelle to award the bid for tight tank installation, servicing at Chalmers Hill Volunteer Fire Department to Land Works LLC doing business as pro septic bids received from the four people here.
Make a, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept, uh, Land Works.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Say that this has been a long time coming and I'm glad to see it happening. It's been years, right? We've been talking about this, so. Nice to see it getting done.
Okay, barring no discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? The passes, Peg?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute, for you adjourn, for you adjourn, one minute.
Blood service messages, if you don't mind. So, um, on April eighteenth, uh, from nine to one, there's a blood drive at Trinity Church. Um, I'm hoping that, um, you would consider attending. Um, Peg's been sending out, um, and we'll send out another reminder on that. And then on May third, um, there's a walk in the reservoir. Um, it's right across from Trinity Church. And it is a, um, in memory of Milt Schumacher, who passed away on his property, um, almost a year ago now. And he used to run the walk that benefited the food pantry for ten years and so, or the run. And now we're having a walk this year. So we've got a lot of sponsors. We'd like to locate the, um, really, um, thank the local businesses, the local organizations like the Lions and the Rotary, um, everybody's been a great support and I hope that everybody comes out and enjoys going in the reservoir for a walk. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? We adjourned.